It's January seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, and I'm gonna call this Lacey City Council meeting to order. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
So we have a agenda and consent agenda before us. Is there any additions or taking motion?
Move approval of the agenda and consent agenda?
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing on, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we have an agenda. First up on our agenda is public comments on items not on the agenda. I didn't receive anyone sign up, but please.
Good evening, everyone. I am Major Casey Martin from the One Two Strike Brigade Combat Team at JBLM. We are the partner organization with the city of Lacey, and we're just trying to reinject ourselves, get better visibility, and put ourselves back into the city and create a stronger relationship so we can continue forward and keep being great community partners. Also, we have for council, just posters to help emphasize and bring more to light of our relationship that exists. So we look forward to continue working within the community and from City Hall down to whatever else we can find ourselves into. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on, and I am not on the agenda? Seeing none. The next up on our agenda is a proclamation for Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month. Start, Councilmember Cox. Can you start with the gen- proclamation? No problem. Ah, got it.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas human trafficking is a form of modern day slavery and involves the use of force, fraud, or coercion to obtain some type of labor or commercial sex act from a victim and?
Whereas Human Trafficking Awareness Month was established in January two thousand eleven to proclaim the equality and freedom inherent to all people, to advocate for legislation and protection for survivors, to educate leaders and to encourage public awareness and action against various forms of human trafficking and?
Whereas the International Labor Organization estimates that there are more than forty million victims of human trafficking globally, and the nonprofit organization Polaris estimates there are hundreds of thousands of victims in the U.S. and?
Whereas due to its isolating nature and the misinterpretation of its definition, many individuals across the globe are unaware trafficking exists in their neighborhoods and?
Whereas increased education about how to identify and prevent human trafficking along with improved victim identification, training for first responders, medical and social services for survivors, and increased public awareness are all critical to ending trafficking and?
Whereas Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month is an opportunity to recognize the critical role all citizens play in preventing, reporting, and abducat- abducatting these heinous crimes and?
Whereas fighting human trafficking awareness and fighting human trafficking is a shared responsibility and will take each of us doing our part. We urge all Lacey residents to educate themselves about all forms, signs, and consequences of human trafficking, and to work together to end this most serious ongoing human rights violation. And now therefore, I, Mayor Andy Ryder of the city of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, hereby proclaim January two thousand nineteen as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month. And I urge all citizens and community organizations to support this observance by helping to educate residents about human trafficking in our city as well as across America and around the world. Signed myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on January seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Would you like to come up and say your words?
Could we have a picture with you?
Sure, but you will say something and we'll take a picture at the end.
Okay, sure.
Hello, city of Lacey. My name is Fiona, and I recently moved to Lacey. I wanted to thank you for giving Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking the proclamation to end trafficking in Lacey. Thank you, Lacey City Council, for supporting us in our mission. My name is Fiona, and I have personally experienced the effects of trafficking within my own family. My young daughter is a survivor of human trafficking. Please realize this is happening in your own backyard. Please educate yourself and your family about the signs of trafficking. If you see something, say something. I would like to invite you all on behalf of Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking to a community conversation. We want to engage with other organizations that serve the vulnerable in our community. We are hosting a partnering conversation to deepen relationships so that we can partner effectively to prevent human trafficking in our community. The community conversation is on January thirty first. It starts at five thirty, and it is located at the Education Service District one-one-three, next to Tumwater Costco. I hope to see you guys there.
Just a quick one. Thank you, Fiona. That conversation, we have the law enforcement presenting a summary and telling us what we can do. The service providers will do the same, and we will also share the prevention work that we've been doing. So, and all of you get to participate in a conversation as to what more we can do and partner together. That's the way to fight, to really do something about human trafficking. Thank you. One more story. Just last month, I met this young woman who's my daughter's age. She was trafficked from Lacey fourteen years ago, at the age of fourteen, while going to school as an athlete. Her family was going to church. So it happens. It could have been my daughter. Just, it's very local. Thank you.
So can the council move up forward, and we'll, we'll take a picture right here? Well, thank you for all you do to raise awareness on human trafficking. And an extra special thanks to Councilmember Hearn, who's been very active in promoting awareness as well for the city of Lacey. Thank you. So next up on our agenda is a referral from the Planning Commission. First up is Development Code Audit Ordinance. Ryan?
Good evening, council. In front of you tonight is an ordinance to amend titles fourteen and sixteen and the development guidelines and public work standards as an audit of the city's development regulations. The Planning Commission has been in the process of reviewing amendments to the city's development regulations since two thousand sixteen. The council has adopted changes recommended by the Planning Commission to Title fifteen Land Division, LMC nine point four-four Controlled Substances, and Unfair Housing in Title nine. Updating and auditing our codes is a priority implementation item from the two thousand sixteen comprehensive plan update. And in fact, it's one of the last implementation items to be done. Changes to the city's development regulations have occurred over time and in incremental fashion. In some cases, these incremental changes have created conflicts and internal inconsistencies in the code. In some cases, these incremental changes have created conflicts and internal inconsistencies in the code. In addition, amendments to the goals and policies contained in the comprehensive plan require changes to development regulations and standards to implement the plan. A lot of our standards were originally adopted in 1985 as part of our original zoning code, and so we've been adding to and taking away things from that without taking a holistic look at how things fit together. And so that's what this did. So I'll give you kind of some high-level amendments that are a part of this package. I know it's quite substantial, so I can't touch on everything. So if you do have any questions, I'll be available here after the presentation to answer any of those. So the first one of note is to remove LMC 16.51 for limited rezones and replace that with a section to eliminate procedures for limited rezones while recognizing ones that have approval. Limited rezones were essentially a contract rezone or a spot rezone that were done by the council back in the seventies and the eighties. Through the hearing examiner process, we actually still had procedures to do that, even though we did not process them any longer. Some of the additional things in Title 16 include changes to our fencing height requirements. Also, a modification to a table contained in our Central Business District Code, Table 16T-06, to allow small, five thousand square foot or less, membership organizations in our Central Business District Zones. And this really applies to smaller churches. I know we had a recent conditional use permit case come in front of you where the question was asked about, you know, why do small churches like this have to go through a conditional use permit every time? Well, we were actually working on that as you brought that up. So the timing was really good. So this eliminates those small churches from having to go through a conditional use permit application process. And then finally, within Chapter 16 is the removal of Chapter 16.42 Industrial District. There are no industrial land use designations in Lacey. All of our industrial land use designations are light industrial. But we still have the old industrial section still on the books. Within Title 14, there are some minor changes in requirements to reduce parking for accessory dwelling units, altering single-family design review requirements to allow carports, something that we previously, right now, we do not allow carports. Previously, we did, so that's come full circle. And now we're looking at allowing carports as part of encouragement of some affordable housing options. And then also updated the requirements related to open space for multifamily projects, including removing open space requirements for small multifamily projects. And then lastly, in Title 14, added requirements for screening and location for drive-through windows and commercial zones were not specifically addressed elsewhere. So we do have some standards in our code already related to drive-throughs in certain zones. Our woodland district and village center zones are two that do. So we're applying some basic standards to drive-through layouts for screening and access design. There are also some amendments included for proposed modifications to the Development Guidelines and Public Works Standards. These are related to submittal timelines for land use applications and the expiration date for inactive applications. Currently, we do have some old, twenty-year-old development applications that are still on our books, and because they have been languishing for so long, we want to be able to take them off the books. And this is a way to be able to do that is for those projects that have long come and gone, but they have not moved forward with them. So the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on November 20th of 2018. The amendments were sent to adjacent jurisdictions, including Thurston County and the private sector, including Olympia Master Builders. No public comments were received. However, one amendment that I did want to point out that we did receive concerns with here recently is related to some standards that are proposed relating to modification of mobile home parks. There was some emails and some correspondence going around from a development company concerned about how this might impact a project that they're considering. Currently, in our mobile home park section of our code, the mobile home parks are not required to meet minimum densities. So in areas where we have, say, moderate or high densities, you know, eight to sixteen units per acre or twelve-plus units per acre, they're not required to meet that minimum threshold. So they could do potentially a development at two, three, four units per acre, which doesn't meet the minimum density. And, you know, what our comprehensive plan, you know, really identifies that we need to meet minimum densities to address our growth needs, our growth targets, our population projections, and those kinds of things. So that's where this comes from, is the importance of, you know, making sure all of our developments meet minimum density. So in front of you tonight is two versions of an ordinance. One is the original as proposed with this language in it. The second version actually has this language omitted. So you have the option of adopting either one tonight. The purpose of the second ordinance is if you want to have this section omitted, what we'd like to do is come back and talk to you at a work session and go over this in a little bit more detail, this amendment specifically, so that we can talk about how, you know, the comprehensive plan fits into this as well as, you know, the mechanism of where this comes from and how we might apply it in the future. So you have two options in front of you tonight. Option one, like I said, is the original ordinance as proposed and as recommended by the Planning Commission. The second option has this section omitted. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I would move to adopt an ordinance to amend Titles 14 and 16 and the Development Guidelines and Public Works Standards as an audit of the city's municipal code, eliminating the chapter on mobile home parks for future consideration.
I'll second it. And the reason why is, yeah, unfortunately, this was one of the... I know the Planning Commission did a lot of great work around this, and I understand the philosophy behind doing some minimum densities. However, this council in this region, for a long time, has been talking about how we have more affordable housing. And I think there are some properties out there where we could have some mobile homes and provide some affordable housing. But if we enact this, in some circumstances, it will prevent that from happening. So I think this council needs to be able to discuss that a little bit more and be there, you know, work with the developers that are interested out there or come to some sort of compromise, so, Councilmember.
Yeah, just to add to that a little bit. It was brought to my attention by a developer who actually builds mobile home parks that this, written the way it is, would eliminate the ability to build mobile home parks in our community at all because they can't meet that minimum density. So what we're recommending, or I'm proposing with my motion, is that, not that we don't do anything with this, but that it come out for further consideration by the Planning Commission and staff to then come back to us, you know, at a later date for further discussion.
Councilmember.
Did they state what minimum density they could meet? Was it, you know, four to six, or...
Rick can probably answer.
Typically, with the manufactured home with a two-car garage footprint, it'd be just over six units to the acre, just right around the six to the acre mark. With the products that's been recently developed out, there's a project being proposed out in the unincorporated portion of the growth area as well as Lakeview Metals Estates, which is in the city of Lacey. So it's just right around six. So the, there... When you look at this zoning, it's not saying zoning district specific. It just says meet the provision of the underlying zoning district. And we have several different ranges of residential zones. We have the low density zero to four district, the three to six, the moderate density, and the high density. So there are a framework of zones out there that could work in that type of manufactured home park design. But since this did come up, it's worth having further conversation and talk about the broader goals of the comp plan, how that really would work, and what properties out there are available for these type of things, and what it would preclude or support. Because again, you're looking at balancing housing types with densities, which all provide different ranges for different types of housing and different types of housing needs and at a different market rates. So it's worth the conversation.
I would just add one additional line, that is, you know, mobile home parks are an affordable housing option for many seniors. It's primarily seniors that are in these mobile home parks. So I just, I want to make sure we look at all facets of this before making a decision on it.
Councilmember Hearn?
For the record, it's easily to interchange mobile home and manufactured home. Manufactured home is the preferred term and actually adds psychological value to.
You are correct.
Councilmember Cox?
Well, I'd like to echo what Councilmember Greenstein said about mobile homes being affordable, manufactured homes being affordable homes. And before, I'm comfortable removing that from the ordinance here. I'd like to hear some assurance that the Planning Commission can get to this fairly quickly and that this not drag out for a really long time. Otherwise, I would recommend that we go ahead and improve it and then come back and amend as needed.
I think what we would do is look at, since the Planning Commission's already held a review of this and held a public hearing, we'd still have the flexibility to take this to a work session of council to discuss that issue at that point. We can also, at the same time, keep the Planning Commission informed of the status and process of the discussions.
I would just request that, if it's going to come to a work session, that we bring some developers who are in this industry to come and talk to us and talk about their concerns. We've always done a pretty good job of reaching out to developers and working out our differences. In this circumstance, you know, there hasn't, it's been a while since we've had a manufactured home park. And so I can understand why this, you know, that wasn't, didn't happen this time around. But going forward, I think what's best for the community is that we look at this a little bit further. Deputy Mayor?
So you don't have to go through an additional hearing if we decided to add this later or not?
No, this is all part of the provisions that were considered by the Planning Commission. So you have the flexibility to act on it with or without additional hearings. If you were to come up with a whole new idea that wasn't considered on the record, then yes, you'd have to go back and go through that hearing process. But this is all part of the record that's created by the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Seven?
I would really like to see a minimum, you know, maybe not as low as what the language reads right now. But I would also, you know, not just a contractor or developer, I'd like to listen to possibly one of the residents that has bought a recent home in one of these developments and hear, would that affect their decision on whether they would have bought or would not have bought if the lot is smaller or bigger or whatever? So, I mean, I think it's a unique perspective that we should hear also.
Councilmember.
Regarding key contacts and stakeholders, we should consider having the Manufactured Home Association perhaps present. They're in Olympia, so they'd be available perhaps. And also to invite City Gates Ministry. They're in a big, they're in this world of renovating manufactured homes. Their model is similar to Habitat for Humanity but for manufactured homes. And it's doing really well for them, and it's a really, it's a part of the solution.
Great, thanks.
So not to put too fine a point on the timeframe, I'm just curious whether this is something we could make happen, say, by March or...
Well, you know, the thing is, is if we don't, if we take this out of the ordinance, then it's going to go on like we, back ordinance that doesn't have a minimum requirement.
Right.
And so I'm not aware of too many plan reviews out there for this. So of course, there's one that is interested in breaking ground and moving forward. But I think we have a little bit of time, but yeah, we should address this in the next couple of months for sure.
Yeah, we would look to have the conversations and bring them back for the full council this spring and not wait for a year before we resolve this issue because it is something part of the 2016 Comprehensive Plan Update. It is a key issue to, you know, when you look at minimum densities to achieve enough housing supply for growth projections, how we accommodate that, as well as balance it with affordable housing. So we will look to have that conversation. If we have this large invite of groups of people, we might use the Planning Commission as the vehicle to have those conversations before we come back to the full council. We'll look at the best way to work through those issues and develop a strategy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt this ordinance to amend Title 14 and 16 and the Development Guidelines and Public Works Standards as an audit of the city's municipal code minus Section 103, which is the Lacey Municipal Code for Manufactured Home Park and Design Standards. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. And next up is Complete Streets Policy. Back to Ryan.
Okay, so you also had in front of you tonight an ordinance to establish a Complete Streets Policy. So the recently adopted pedestrian bicycle plan for Lacey and the Lacey urban growth area identifies a number of pedestrian bicycle and spot improvement projects throughout our community. The plan also identifies a number of funding options for the city to consider, to implement the project recommendations. One of the funding options recommended in the pedestrian bicycle plan is to utilize the Washington State Transportation Improvement Board's Complete Streets Award. The Complete Streets Award is a relatively new funding opportunity for local governments. It is particularly important because it is a smaller amount of money with great amount of flexibility. So the funding awards range from $125,000 to about $500,000. However, the project, excuse me, in order for the city to qualify for this grant program, however, we do have to have a Complete Streets Policy. And so that's what's in front of you tonight. The Complete Streets Policy was cooperatively developed between the city's Public Works Department and the Community and Economic Development Department. The policy is consistent with both the 2030 transportation element of the Comprehensive Plan and the pedestrian bicycle plan. Policy states that the city strives to plan for a transportation system that is a multimodal network for all users, recognizes the recommendations of the pedestrian bicycle plan, is coordinated across jurisdictions, and is sensitive to context and neighborhood character. The policy meets the requirements of eligibility for this grant program. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing back on December 4th of 2018. No comments were received, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend LMC 12.44 Complete Streets Policy to the City Council for adoption. Be happy to answer any questions.
I move that we adopt the ordinance to establish a Complete Streets Policy under Lacey Municipal Code 12.44.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember?
I just think it has a really good name. Complete Streets Policy, you can't beat that.
Obviously, this makes a lot of sense if there's funding out there available, but we need to have a policy in place to receive it, then let's put the policy in place to receive it. It's pretty easy. Is there any other discussion?
I'd just like to commend the Planning Commission for their work on this. And I told Ryan earlier tonight, you guys are getting lots of notice around town. I'm hearing about it at Regional Planning Council and other meetings about how great this is and how impressed they are with Lacey's work, so.
Great, thank you.
Rock on.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. It's...
Well, I just want to say that I just really think that this is important. Based on our pedestrian and bicycle plan and how it works into getting funding and moving forward on it, I think it fits also into our climate mitigation plan because once you have a complete streets, you can kind of adapt more walkable, more transit-oriented type of planning.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. It's been moved and seconded to adopt this ordinance to establish a Complete Streets Policy. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
So next up on our agenda is the mayor's report. And I have two recommendations to reappoint to, one to the library board and the others to our Planning Commission. I can do this separately, or I can do it together.
Do it together.
So I would recommend that reappointment of Pamela Nelson to the library board, and I'd recommend the reappointment of Eddie Bishop to the Planning Commission.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Only, are they here tonight?
Let's see, Eddie is here.
Okay, and it is Pamela.
No, I didn't see her. Eddie, you want to come up and say a few words?
We haven't voted yet, so.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder and council. I was appointed to the Planning Commission back in August of this year to fill an expired term, and I've really enjoyed my time on the commission. The staff is great with Rick and Ryan and Jessica. And as we've seen tonight, we do some pretty interesting stuff. You know, get to delve into public hearings and all that kind of stuff. It's been, it's been a good experience for me, and I appreciate the opportunity to do it and look forward to doing it further if you vote to let me do that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank you, Eddie, for your willingness to serve on the Planning Commission again and the recent work that you did, the 300 and how many pages was the ordinance we just did? Took me back to my planning, memories of my Planning Commission days. And there's a few of us on this council that served at the capacity of the Planning Commission. And we know the...
the planning commission. And we know that you guys really dig deep into, into the weeds, if you will. And your work doesn't go unnoticed, so thank you.
Great, thank you. So, it's been moved and second to reappoint Pamela Nelson to the library board and to reappoint Eddie Bishop to the planning commission. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the city manager's report.
All the mayor and city council, we have one item before you. That is Lift Station 22 improvements. And Jason will provide that report for you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. Staff recommends to award Lacey contract number PW 2018-22 to low bidder Clark &amp; Sons Excavating LLC from Battleground, Washington in the amount of $338,466.64, which came in below the engineer's estimate. We have allotted 120 working days for this project. This project, Lift Station 22 is one of 50 lift stations owned by the city. It's located off of 45th Avenue Southeast and serves approximately 400 single-family homes in both Lexington and Avonlea. It was originally constructed in 1995. This project proposes to, well, plan on integrating a standby generator that was donated to the city by the Red Cross. We plan on integrating that generator into the lift station's electrical system in event of power outages. Right now, right now, actually, that generator actually has been delivered to the site. It's just sitting there, but it's not actually automated to, in the event of a power outage. We still have to have city staff go out there and actually power it up. This project integrates it into the electrical system with a new control cabinet and everything, so it's all automated. It also upgrades electrical and mechanical components to bring the lift station up to current city standards. Not only that, does the generator will be automated, but we'll have full control and automation of several components, you know, within, within the lift station. It also upgrades the valve vault to meet OSHA regulations. You can see on the picture here, that's the current state of the lift station right now, originally constructed in 1995. It's definitely time for some upgrades. Right there, the picture below shows an example of one of our other lift stations with a standby generator and new control cabinet. So, we're just gonna, we're planning on bringing this lift station up to our current standards. I think that about covers it. If you guys have any questions.
I'd move to award Lacey contract number PW 2018-22 to low bidder Clark &amp; Sons Excavating LLC from Battleground, Washington in the amount of $338,466.64.
Sound good.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just have a really quick question. I think it's quick. So, when it says valve vault too deep, how did that happen?
Well, it was, it's constructed in 95, and we didn't have the same, same regulations that we do now. And really, it, too deep, meaning like OSHA regulations require safety restraint system to get into a valve vault that's deeper than four feet. So, there's a lot of extra effort that goes into maintaining that valve vault. So, when we replace it, the, the new valve vault is going to be bigger and meet our standard size and not deeper than four feet. So, we won't have to have the same effort into maintaining the system.
Oh, okay.
Just bring attention to the National Public Works picture, if you will, and not really, our nation not really investing in its infrastructure. But Lacey doesn't have that problem. I tell people, we're constantly upgrading our infrastructure to ensure it's, it's ready and working when it needs to for the, for the residents. And I'd also like to note that the second place bid was a contractor from Lacey, which is always great to see.
Right.
Any other discussion? Councilmember?
Yeah, so lower than the staff recommended, recommended bid, what was the analysis of that afterward? I mean, it's nice to save the dough, but I'm, I'm sure you look at that.
Yep, it actually wasn't too far off. I mean, so the, I'm sorry, I have it, probably just kind of breezed through it there. 403,000 was the engineer's estimate and 338. We actually had some pretty competitive bids. I think we had three bids that came in under the engineer's estimate. And then, I think there were six more that were above it, pretty well above it. But I think we did pretty, pretty good on the bids.
Market's hungry. Market's hungry.
Yeah, it's the time of year, I think.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. It's been moved and second to award this Lacey contract number PW 218 to, dash 22 to the low bidder. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
That was it.
Then on to standing general committees. First up is land use.
The land use committee met on December 11th, and our, our topic was the development code audit. Ryan Andrews walked us through that. As by way of background, the planning commission has been reviewing amendments to the city's development regulations since 2016, back on my good old days on the planning commission. Council has adopted changes recommended to Title 15, land division, LMC 9.44, controlled substances, and unfair housing, and Title 9. These changes have been made in compliance with the State Growth Management Act requirement to periodically conduct a review of development regulations to bring them up to date with any relevant changes in the Growth Management Act, land use and population growth. In communities planning under the Growth Management Act, and Lacey is one of those, development regulations are required to be consistent with adopted comprehensive plans. I can read on, but I think you guys get the gist of this. So, it was a very informative session. Anything you would want to add to that, Lenny, or?
No.
Okay. That's my report.
Great, thanks. Next up is the general government.
The General Government and Public Safety Committee met December 11th. There were six items, five of which the council had, has already taken up and approved. The one that was mainly information, it was on our drone program update. And so, on October 31st, 2018, the Lacey Police Department acquired a DJI Matrix 210 drone. And the drone is registered with the Federal Aviation Administration and piloted by FAA licensed pilots only. So, you have to take, go to training to be able to fly it. The drone is water resistant, has a seven mile radius contingent on obstructions, and can reach speeds of, of up to 50 miles per hour. Accident avoidance sensors are located in front and on the sides for collision prevention. An infrared camera will be installed sometime in January of 2019. And this will be used primarily for law enforcement when necessary, for sometimes for our fireworks show, taking pictures. There is some major requirements to keep it away from areas where privacy is an issue, and that there's certain height restrictions based on FAA rules. So, it was really an interesting presentation. But that's where we are, and I'm not sure if it's been used yet. So, thank you. That's my report.
Great. Next up is boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'm up first. The mayor's forum did meet the first Friday of the month. We didn't have a really many big items to discuss that, that really affects the city of Lacey. The, the one thing that we did talk about is that we're inviting our new county commissioner to our mayor's forum next month. And so, we'll all get to meet him, especially some of the mayors from South County. Do not know Ty Minster as well. And so, he'll be coming and, and talking to us next month. So, that's my report on the mayor's forum.
Quick question on that?
Yeah.
So, is he going to be invited to attend that as a regular member of that group now?
No, no, no. He's just going to come. And I've, I've reported out in the past that the county commissioner and the port commissioner used to come to the mayor's forum. But we've decided to ask them to attend on an as-needed basis. And so, we will try, we will try to probably meet with the port and the chair of the county commission, you know, maybe at least once a year or so. This is just sort of an introduction to several of the mayors in, in South County, so. So, next up is the Thurston Chamber Shared Legislative Committee. And we actually met on January 7th. We met with legislators from the 22nd, the 2nd, the 20th, and the 35th districts. And we first toured the Lacey Vechon Services hub. Several of the legislators had heard of the hub, but this was the first time that many have toured the facility and heard the backstory of, of how it was started. The purpose was not only to show them the facility, but, but for them to see firsthand the condition of the building. As one of our legislative priorities for the Thurston County is, is for a capital budget request of $2 million to upgrade the exterior of the building. So, the hub can stay at that location for, you know, at least the next 15 years, as we've talked about. But hopefully, it can remain there permanently. After the tour, we met back at SBSC's main campus building for a dinner and presentations of the rest of Thurston County's priorities for this session, which included a $4.5 million ask for the NEPA CEPR review for the I-5 sections for Mounts Road through Tom Water, a capital budget request for the first responders' regional training facility that will be a, a partnership between the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tom Water for $4 million, a request for a Southwest Washington Regional Agricultural and Innovation Park that's going to be located in Nino for, costs about 1.91 million, and also to restore the judicial impact fee. This is something that I just learned, that there's a state statute that requires state agencies to file judicial actions in Thurston County Superior Court. But the funding that has been there to help offset that cost to Thurston County was dramatically reduced in 2017. Because of the state statute, the, the majority of those cases come to Thurston County, the vast majority of them. And so, this judicial impact fee would help offset that. And it used to be in place, and it's been, now it's not. So, that's also an ask of for the State Committee, where, and that's my report on that. And then, on January 9th, the Transportation Policy Board met. And our first part of the, of the meeting was, we received a update on the city of Lacey's pedestrian bicycle plan, as we have all seen. And this has been a, a topic that I've been bragging about at the Transportation Policy Board for a while. And so, Ryan came and gave an update of our, of our plan, which is part of our comprehensive plan update. And it, the, the board asked a lot of good questions, and we're very impressed with the plan. And so, it went really over really well. Very thankful for Ryan doing that. The other issue we talked about is we have a, a, a business rep that's been on the Transportation Policy Board for 16 years, Doug DeForest. He no longer necessar, he's retired, and so he no longer necessarily represents a business. But we would like for him to continue to stay on the board because of all of his years of participation and all that knowledge. And so, I brought together a subcommittee to talk about this. And, and we've decided to put forward a, a bylaw recommendation that would allow emeritus position, if you've served for, if you've been a business or, business rep or a citizens rep for at least 10 years, to allow you to stay on for, at the chair's suggestion and approval from the Transportation Policy Board, for another two-year term as a, as a voting member. And then, after that, you could, you could stay on as a non-voting member and keep getting reelected. It sounds like he's interested in maybe one more two-year term, and that might be it. But, so, we're, discussed that for a while, and I, I think we're happy with that outcome. Of course, we set the meeting schedule for the year. We also talked about the preparation for the election of officers that will happen in February. I've been the chair now for, geez, six years, something like that. And I'll, I'm up for the chair again. And Graham Sacerson is, is the vice chair. And so, that, those elections will happen next month.
Andy?
Yep.
I was curious, how, how long has Graham been on there?
So, so, you know, that, that question came up because there's, Graham was on as a representative for the city of Lacey for quite a few years. And of course, Pete Komet has been there almost as long as Doug DeForest, not quite, but almost as long as Doug DeForest. This new policy is just for the citizen or business rep. And so, it wouldn't qualify if you've an elected official that are there in your own duty, you know, as your own responsibility. So, that was, we talked about that as well, because we do have a couple of people that are over that 10-year mark.
So, in 10 years, you might not be able to do that.
Yeah, yeah. If I wanted to, you could, you could always come back and apply as a citizen rep, if you wanted to continue to serve. If you want to keep going at 7:00 in the morning.
Thanks for being.
We, we did the same thing on the Medic One board.
Oh.
Created an emeritus position because of Dr. Fell.
Okay.
Who had been on there actually since the beginning. He was one of the people who started Medic One.
Mm-hmm.
And he's retired now, and we, but they wanted the knowledge. They wanted the history to still be there.
Well, yeah.
Same thing, created an emeritus position.
Well, and Doug, for as long as, since 2010, since as I've, as I've been on the board, he's also our representation up to the Puget Sound Regional Planning Council. And so, once a month, he drives all the way up to Seattle.
Willingly.
Yes.
Actually willingly.
And I did it for the first, yeah, I think, you know, several years. And then I turned it, made you, I turned it over to you.
I'm smarter. I use conference call.
Isn't that like the Community Action Council when Carolyn got appointed? They appointed me as a private sector rep. So, that was always nice.
Yep. So, the other issues we talked about is that the, the governor's transportation budget provides funding for the Puget Sound Regional Council to study ferry service across Puget Sound. And I think maybe this council knows that last year, Senator Hunt introduced some legislation to look at passenger ferry service out of Olympia. And so, this is sort of along those same lines to look, to look at the ferry service across Puget Sound.
If I may?
Yep.
It seems like if they do that, it could be a good idea, but that ferry needs to be fast. Fast, doesn't it?
I think that's will be part of the discussion for sure. And last, we just had an I-5 update. TRBC Wash Dot, and there's been several other community partners have been working together on looking at strategies for the I-5 corridor from Mounts Road through Thurston, through the Thurston region. So, we just had a quick update on that. And that is my report. So, next up is the mayor.
So, the Joint Animal Services Commission, or JASCOM, has not met yet. A lot did not or does not meet in January. So, the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency met January 9th. We passed an updated Personnel Policy Manual. And then, we had, besides other things that are less important to Lacey, we had a, an update on the November, December, and then 2018 air quality summary for particulate matter 2.5 microns cubed. So, and remember that Lacey is, even though the monitor is in Lacey at Mountain View School, it is for all of Thurston County. So, what is notable in November, there were six days that were only moderate, moderately good air quality days. And then, three days that were in the rage of being unsafe for sensitive groups. In December, there were six days of moderately good air quality and one day that was unhealthy for sensitive groups. But then, when you looked at over 2018, Lacey showed 328 good days of air quality, 19 days of moderate levels of 2.5 particulate 19 days of moderate levels of 2.5 particulate matter, and then nine days that were unsafe for sensitive groups. Four days that were unhealthy for all of us. And two days recorded as very unhealthy. So when you looked at that and compared it with the wildfire air times, that's when we ended up having really unhealthy air quality. And it was significant because they did a comparison of when there were wildfires and when there weren't. And we actually, even though it was just right on the line, we were actually within the range of a good air quality when there wasn't wildfires. And these wildfires are coming down both from British Columbia and then up from California and Eastern Washington. So if you've been in the area when they happened, you'd really recognize how bad it was. So let me see. Dr. Hadley is still working with the Evergreen State College students on the Community Toxics Project. And remember, that was a project that is measuring other components that are in the particulate matter, not just soot and that kind of things, but other chemicals. And then we had a presentation by the Public Relations and Outreach Director on how to share ORCA news on social media channels. That may be pretty simplistic for some of you, but I learned a lot, given that how not too tactical I am. And lastly, our financials are on target for the second quarter going into the third quarter. And that's my report.
So I read something recently, or might have watched a show. They said that the particulate matter nationally, you know, on our national scale rose by three and a half percent and they blamed it on the economy being so well. And so, you know, more trucks driving, industry being busier, running more shifts, et cetera. So I mean, it's, I guess it's, it makes sense, but it was interesting. And I don't know if I said it correctly because I'm not a scientist.
Well, interestingly, during the day of 9/11, prior to that, there was a certain level of air quality. On the 9/11, when the planes were grounded, air quality went up significantly. It was kind of surprising. So, yeah, so it does make a difference on transportation types of emissions.
So next up is Councilmember Young.
Hi. Thurston Thrives isn't meeting until the 28th because of MLK Day. And the EDC Board hasn't met yet this month. So the CIP did meet on Monday and we discussed, actually I missed the meeting, but Carolyn Cox filled in for me. And they discussed the process for setting home funding priorities and planned the retreat, which will be on February 11th. So we'll have more news after the February retreat. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Councilmember Greenstein.
Law and Justice met today. Pat O'Connor was elected chair and John Toonheim elected vice chair. Prior to this, they were actually co-chairs. It was their decision to no longer do it that way. I think John was looking to not quite have as heavy a load on that particular committee. The main focus of the meeting today was to talk about the future of the committee and how best to move forward. The decision was made to form a couple of subcommittees. This group only meets quarterly. And, you know, really with four meetings a year, it's difficult to get the work done unless you have subcommittees who can do the work in the interim and then report back. So two subcommittees were formed. The first was one to rewrite the charter. We decided to do that first because there are several changes that we're looking to make, including adding more citizen reps onto that committee. So you kind of have to do the charter before you can move forward. And then the next step will be working on the strategic plan. EMS Comprehensive Planning Committee met on January 10th. Most of the meeting, in fact, about 90% of that meeting was spent working on the questions for a survey that Medic One will be giving, going out to the public with. So it's going to be a professionally done survey. But we worked on the actual wording of the questions, which will now go back to the survey company to see if they work and how they need to be reworded. The rest of the meeting was spent assigning a committee to work on the goal one, objective one, and two for our comprehensive plan. So at the next meeting, they should be presenting those, that goal and those two objectives. Thurston 911 met on January 9th. Financials for 2018 looked very good. Revenues actually came in above budget and expenses below budget. So that was, that was a nice way to end the year. Most interesting topic, I think, of the day was that the Nisqually Tribe is showing interest in actually becoming a member of that organization. That would be something new. They've not been a member in the past. They've been a user of the system, but not a member of the organization. They actually want to be a board member and a voting board member. So we'll see how that works out.
Though they have paid, right? They have paid.
They do, yes, they pay. They pay for the use, absolutely. Only other topic of interest, actually a couple of other short ones. We're currently four positions down, so we're actually quite short on call takers. We have nine applicants for those four positions and we're actually setting up two training classes to address the shortage. So we have enough people in the overtime pool and in the, we have a pool of people who are qualified but don't work full-time, so it's a part-time pool that we can draw from. We have enough there to not leave us short. And they will, the training should be complete and we should have more people in place by June. Also, Senator Hunt introduced legislation, or will be introducing legislation, to actually give TCOM the authority to go out to the public for additional funding for the radio system. You've heard me talk quite a bit about the $32 million need for redoing the radio system. We have a radio system that does not work in parts of the county. So we have law enforcement to fire people that actually can't communicate. There are parts of the city, parts of the county where just there's no radio communication at all. He has introduced legislation in the Senate. So looking for someone now to introduce that similar legislation in the House. And we have meetings scheduled to work on that. And then just one last thing. You may recall that on 12/27 and 28, we had a 12-hour outage of 911. You probably, if you have a cell phone, you probably got notices on your cell phone that it was out. That was a national outage. It wasn't everywhere in the nation or even everywhere in the state, but it was widespread and it was throughout the nation. That was caused by actually issues with CenturyLink's equipment. So the federal government, along with the state and several others, are actually pursuing probably lawsuits against CenturyLink for that. And that's what happened in the past when there's been outages. But I mean, that's a long time to not have any 911 service. We don't know of any incidents that happened in Thurston County that weren't handled. Thurston County was pretty quick to get the notices out on everyone's cell phones and in addition to give another number to call. Unfortunately, the state also puts out notices. So you probably got one from the state and one from the county. The state notice actually gives the wrong number to call, which is problematic. And let me rephrase, it's not really the wrong number. They recommend you call your local police or fire station. That's problematic because people just aren't going to have that number, right? So the county actually, when they put the notice out specifically give a number, which is a non-emergency number that still goes to the 911 office for handling. So we're working with the state to try to make sure they either give that same number or just don't give a number in the future. So that is my report.
I have a quick question. I appreciate Senator Hunt introducing the legislation. I know it needs some work to find the House, but it seems like talking to our state legislators that there's not a lot of encouraging advice coming back that it's going to pass. So what is TCOM's backup plan if they cannot have the authority to go out to the public?
Great question. No good answer, but a great question. At this point, there really is not a backup plan. There's really, at this point, no other way to fund the radio system. We're looking at some other options. We're working with the state as far as doing this jointly with the State Patrol, which is likely how we'll move forward. But unless there's some money either, what we're looking for is we're asking the legislature to approve the county going out for an additional 1/10th of one cent. And again, it would go out to the public for a vote. If they don't give us that authority, really don't have a good answer. We looked at going out to the capital budget. That wasn't very promising as well. So at this point, I really don't know. But it's a serious issue that could become a major concern.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Hearn.
When the 911 went out, I couldn't help but having this, I mean, it's a very serious thing, but I couldn't help having this image of someone tripping over the cord and pulling it out of the plug. Can't believe that they don't have more redundancy about that, but they'll work that out.
Believe it or not, just because you bring that up, there actually are multiple redundancies.
Yeah.
The problem is, the problem happened with the information, the call actually coming in. So it never got to the system, so it never got to the redundancies. The actual call from the public never made it to 911.
Right. Well, hopefully they fix that. So Experience Olympia and Beyond met Tuesday. And business as usual, except for a very full discussion about homelessness. We in the area are spending a lot of money in the hoteliers through Experience Olympia and Beyond to bring in tourism. And unfortunately Olympia and Beyond is receiving some negative memes and things from the internet, which is counterproductive to the communication efforts that Olympia, Experience Olympia and Beyond and company are putting out all the time. So the question of the discussion from Experience Olympia and Beyond was not meant to be how to solve the problem, but how do they communicate about this and try to mitigate the negative that is arising from the big problem of homelessness that we have in our area. So that was a lively discussion. And it'll be, well, I'm bringing it to the council because it's my job. And they're concerned about, they want to do their job. But it is also a challenge to have that affect their efforts because they're working so hard to highlight our area. And so they wish all electeds the best in helping the situation. And also take to, will take input on how best they can communicate and respond to that. Although Shawna's extremely professional and has wonderful ideas about how to do that. But certainly she's open. Board's open. Thurston County Coalition Against Traffic Queen, thank you, council, for the proclamation tonight. I just will stress one more time the great opportunity for the partnering conversation, which is January 31st at the ESD 113 over there in Tombwater. Last year again was a community conversation. And it was, it's a very large venue and it was packed. A lot of presentation. This, it will also be packed, but we're personally inviting key contacts in the area. For example, representatives from St. Martin's University, the tribe, the hospitals, these kinds of leaders. We'd love to see a representation of Lacey's finest there and/or detectives. We're going to have a large amount of roundtables. There'll be some presentation, but a large amount of roundtables where we're going to have conversations and a work session about the issue and be solutions oriented. We invite all elected officials, being that it's the fifth week. So should be available, or more available, to attend and contribute. It would be much, much appreciated. And that's the 31st of this month. They are taking our RCPs. There will be some eats there. And it should be a very productive partnering conversation. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've already reported on my boards and committees, but like Councilmember Greenstein said, with one of his committees meeting four times a year, it's not really, you can't really, you have a challenging time getting the work done. So Solid Waste is, Advisory Committee is going to, back to a monthly meeting instead of bimonthly. And the day and time will probably change, but we'll find out at the next meeting. So that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox.
Was somebody named Chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Councilmember Stedman?
Yes, I was, thank you.
Congratulations.
Very flattering.
Okay. Intercity Transit, that's last night. The meeting was mostly informational. We received an update on the Olympia Transit Center construction, as well as the work on the Patterson Street facility, where they're trying to work miracles in limited amount of space. We did authorize the general manager to have the Department of Enterprise Services amend a master planning agreement with StanTech to include an additional 135,000 in funding and a new agreement with them to provide design services for van pool center facilities, fuel, and wash buildings for an amount not to exceed $1.272,093. So that's pretty cool. And then there's a program called Walk and Roll. It's a youth education program that is really amazing. And we received an update on that last night, as well as an invitation for board members and staff to attend an open house today at their new facility, which is on Washington Street, literally right across from the Transit Center. This program was formerly housed in an old garage downtown and not very safe and not very inviting. And this is just huge and bright and wonderful. It houses a large workspace where volunteers recondition bicycles for students who complete the education program. And it's got plenty of storage for the bikes themselves instead of having to haul them across town and put them in a storage facility. And there's office space for staff. This is a really, really important program that they do. And then the Thurston Regional Planning Council met on the first Friday of the month. And we approved the agency's 2019 operating budget and updates to the pay and classification plan. We heard a presentation on another intercity transit program called Bus Buddies. And this program links experienced bus rider volunteers, who are called bus buddies, with novice riders in the community. And it's meant to remove barriers for people in accessing the services that intercity transit has. And it's especially, I mean, they will go with you all the way up to Seattle if that's what your need is. But it's, the design is to help people be comfortable with it and to allow people who may have some infirmities but don't really need dial-a-lift service to feel more comfortable and confident about boarding the buses. We also heard from, about the joint base Lewis McCord Regional Economic Impact Analysis and Community Survey results. Too much to go into here, but the survey results are posted on the Thurston Regional Planning Council's website in the document center. Should be pretty easy to find. And then we heard a presentation from Sarah Luna, who's the SSMCP Program Coordinator, on an initiative to develop and distribute resource kits relating to medical, health, housing, food, transportation, education, and employment, communication, and finances to help connect communities members to available services. And I just couldn't help but be struck that that's what our Lacey Veterans Hub does here. And they are doing this work with Yelm, Lakewood, St. Martin's, Clever Park School District, and others. So, kind of neat. And then this past Thursday, the Ad-Hoc Committee, or the Urban Cities Ad-Hoc Committee on Homelessness and Affordable Housing, met. This is populated by representatives from Lacey, Tombwater, and Olympia. We celebrated our one-year anniversary together as a team and really felt a renewed spirit of cooperation with Thurston County on having this really become a regional approach on solving our housing crisis. And to that end, newly-elected County Commissioner Ty Minser came and met. And to that end, newly-elected County Commissioner Ty Minser came and met with us. And I have pressed Commission Chair John Hutchings and he's agreed to come to our next meeting and I just, I'm really hoping that we, you know, we can open up things with the county now and, and work together as we should have been. Olympia City Council Jim Cooper, who co-chairs this group with me, invited us to take part in the city's managed encampment tour. It was part of the Olympia City Council's retreat on Saturday. And so I took him up on it and we toured the managing, managed encampment, as well as an unmanaged encampment that's like a block down and across the street. And the contrast is just stark. The difference is like night and day. The city's Public Information Officer was there and so I asked for pictures because it was discouraged to take pictures and I get that. So I have now received them and I will forward, I'll forward them to each of you, as well as to the city manager and any interested staff. And that is my report.
Thank you. Well, we've reached the end of our agenda. Next up, the council's going to adjourn to a work session to discuss the sidewalk program. But as always, you keep it classy, Lacey, and I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.